On September the 25th, 2024, here at City Hall. And it is 10:09 a.m. Colleagues, do you have any announcements or anything to say before we start the meeting? All right, with that, Clark, would you please get item number one on the floor?
Ordinance amending section 2-336 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi to change the name of the Constituent Services and Information Department and place functions and duties of the Office of Publications under the Constituent Services and Communications Department formerly known as the Consistent Constituent Services and Information Department.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, Mr. Banks? Did you have anything you'd like to add to this as Finance Chair?
No, I guess my only thing would be, we still want to look at a better flow for IT and see if there was any recommendations on how to handle the rest of that department, you know, especially when it comes to the revenue, some of the things that I think have become very concerning to this body.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Okay, just for the record, and we've talked, and I may have missed some of the meetings during the course of all this discussion, what are the advantages, who are the pros and cons of taking this action? How does the city benefit or, you know, what's the impact on the citizens by taking this action here? Can somebody explain that?
Mr. Banks, would you like to?
Yeah, basically, what you're doing, since the city ordinance calls for there to be a Department of Constituent Services and Communications, in IT, there was a division, Publications, which does graphics, printing, T-shirts, all of that stuff. And so what you're doing is streamlining it to where now you have all of your communications, all of your publications in one shop. And then the advantage is now you have a communications department that's citywide, that even communicates on behalf of the council. But then also, there's a revenue generating source with that publications department that I believe will serve the city more advantageously streamlined with all the communications and everything else.
Okay. One of the things that concerned me during the budget process was the dramatic loss of personnel in the IT department. And I still don't understand, I mean, I think that's something we need to continue to explore and figure out, you know, why it is we've had this huge turnover of personnel in the IT department. Who ends up being the head of this department? And how do we get to the, you know, find out more about why this huge turnover of personnel?
That is one of the reasons why I asked Mr. Malinbecker for a recommendation on how more to better deal with IT. I believe it serves better to take Publications away from IT and put it in a place where it could be more stable and more productive.
So this is going to end up being one department? So who was the head of, so Dr. Reed was the head of IT?
Right.
This other department of the Communications and Constitu-, who was the head of that?
Well, it looks like that the administration will make Melissa Faith Payne the director.
So who's going to be head of the new department?
Melissa Faith Payne.
Right.
So she'll oversee Dr. Reed?
No.
No.
This is separate.
This is separate.
We're taking this away from IT.
Oh, so, excuse me, I was...
You're taking Publications away from IT?
IT and putting it under Constituent Services.
Yes, which...
So IT will still be there, a separate department?
For, until we get a recommendation on how to better handle that from Mr. Malinbecker.
Well, should we wait until we get those recommendations before we take this action?
We need to do it now as part of the budget process.
Why is that?
We voted unanimously to move the monies to start this department back up.
You voted?
Okay, I'm fine, I voted for moving the monies, but this is a different vote, right? It's not the same vote, is it?
It is.
Is this ready, fire, aim instead of ready, aim, fire?
No, 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 we've discussed it. This is, no, Mr. Foot, we went through a great deal of trouble.
Okay, okay.
During the process, and so this is just confirming what we did in committee.
Ready, aim, fire.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, or at least I understand.
Well, I think you raise some very good questions, Mr. Foot.
Okay.
And I appreciate that. It's always good to go back and revisit something.
I think when we get to item number six, we can discuss further IT.
Okay.
We're good? Any other questions on that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Malinbecker, did you have anything you wanted to add to this? Y'all are just working on the details? Okay.
You got anything you want to add, Melissa, about your vision?
I have a second?
No. Okay.
All right, y'all, thank you so much. All right, if there are no other questions on this item, all in favor? Okay, it passes with a vote of 4-0. Thank you, colleagues. All right, now, we're moving on to item number two.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Dr. Donald Carl Echols, DBA, the Echols Group, to provide lobbying services to the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Yesterday, we tabled this, I tabled this item because I felt like that not all of the council members had had an opportunity to visit with Dr. Echols. And so then, over the last few hours, several hours after the meeting, I learned that some council members had had a chance to visit with you, and there really was more readiness than I first was led to believe. And so, colleagues, we did not get a presentation from the mayor yesterday, but Ms. Echols, Dr. Echols, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium. And colleagues, if you have any questions of her and how she, what her plan is for working with us through the legislative session, I would entertain those questions at this time.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Just for, just for a future, just a little future glimpse, everybody here in this meeting is on the Legislative Committee, and I anticipate calling a meeting within the next couple of three weeks and working with the administration so we can go ahead, administration, and get our legislative agenda done now. And we can get it working already in October. I think time is of essence, and for once, we could be earlier than January getting that done now that we have, if this vote passes, then we will have a lobbyist in place and we can get her working pretty quickly. And so, have y'all already started thinking about a legislative agenda for next year? Mr. Wright?
We have started thinking about it. We have asked the departments to submit their requests to us so that we can compile that list and pull it together so that we can meet with the Legislative Committee of the Council and work with the state lobbyists in getting that information.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Wright. And then, colleagues, I also want to encourage you, if there is something that you would like to see on the legislative agenda this year, Dr. Echols has committed to me that she's also interested in helping us with anything that we may want to see on the agenda as well. So with that, if, are there any questions? Mr. Banks?
First of all, your reputation precedes you, so thank you for offering yourself up in your services for the City of Jackson. One of the things I think that's going to be very important, as it is every time, and I think you understand this, and hopefully, the administration can walk lockstep with that, is just overall strategy of how we're working with committees, but then more so how we're working with other municipalities that may be endeavoring to accomplish some of the same goals that we have. One of the things that I would like to see that I think that we need, and I think that there is a hunger for from Greenville, Hattiesburg, and I think we're working with those municipalities would help is land bank legislation. And that's something that we have tried to do in the past, but it's more so been a solo attempt rather than trying to, you know, build a coalition through MML and with some of those other municipalities that are important so that it won't just be a Jackson Ask. And so hopefully, we can nail down the right strategy and I feel good about you taking up the hems and lobbying for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I may add to that, I think there's a lot of advantage to finding pockets of support in other cities that have similar needs. One thing that I would like to add, Madam President, is once the agenda is finalized and the council votes on that agenda, I think it's crucial to invite a meeting with our local delegation at the legislature and apprise them of the issues that we're going to be bringing forward in advance of the session.
I think we all would agree with that. Okay, and I think we should all be there, the committee members should be there.
Agreed.
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the big issues that priorities for me for the upcoming year is centers around the task force we set up for abandoned properties, abandoned residential properties and also abandoned commercial properties. The state has, you know, close to 2,000, we've got, you know, hundreds ourselves. You get these high-profile commercial properties that we're excited about the hotel being taken down. In fact, I want to recommend to the council and the administration that we have a ribbon cutting when that gets ready to get taken down. That's, you know, not normally the way you do a ribbon cutting, but I think it'd be worthy on this. If we could draw a big audience, might sell tickets, whatever. But the, it's a really huge issue for the city and is a huge issue for the state as well, and we need to figure out the funding for that because the city doesn't have enough money. This is, this is not something where you can do it just house by house. You had to take a big, bolder approach, and we're working on a master plan right now that the template was given to us by the lady from HUD. And so we're going to try to get some money from HUD, and we'd need, you'd probably need to coordinate with our federal lobbyist on that matter. But just be aware that's going to be a big issue for me and also Councilman Hartley, too, who's been working on this with me.
I think that's a great idea because until you remove blighted and abandoned properties like that, you can't have as much economic development as you want, so.
Exactly, right.
And to Councilman Banks's point, that's another area I think we can find tremendous pockets of support from other cities around the state.
Plus, you've got, the delegation will be receptive to this, too. Representative Cutip is all in on this process. He's part of our task force as well. And so, anyway, that's going to be a big priority for me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, anything else? All right, if not, all in favor? Thank you, it passes with a 4-0. Thank you, Dr. Echols. We'll look forward to working with you. All right, item three.
Order amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 municipal budget.
So moved. We have Mr. Banks. I'll let Mr. Grisell make the second, Mr. Banks.
That's fine.
Make the motion. All right, colleagues, this is, this item is now on the floor. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, can Finance just walk us through this?
So all of these transfers are transfers done at the end of the year to make sure there's enough money in each account so nothing rolls into the negative going into the next fiscal year.
And this is for the 23-24 budget? This is last year's budget, right?
This year's budget.
This is this year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and these transfers basically are carryovers?
So there were available funds in certain accounts, and we were able to move them over with you all's permission. This is getting permission to do this to make sure everyone has enough money to close out. So for the closeout, usually, we can go across departments once we have your permission to make sure everything's done.
All right. Are any of these pass due invoices? That was a question.
Can you ask that question again, sir?
Are any of these pass due invoices?
Some of them are due to, pass due invoices.
All right, and are any of these decisions that should have come before this body?
This is us asking for permission now. We haven't made the transfers yet, but with you all's permission, we can go ahead and close out with this.
My question is, are any of these transfers that are happening, something that should have come before, within the fiscal year, come before this body in the form of an order?
Some of them may be.
Okay. I would prefer, rather than do it like this, I understand that we need to close out, but if it was supposed to come to us within a given fiscal year in the form of an order, my question is, go ahead, I think you know where I'm going.
Sharon Timms, Deputy CFO. Because this is coming into an election year, we can only have one budget amendment in the fourth quarter.
Right.
That's why some of these didn't come before you like that. We had to do it now because if they had done an amendment, we could not come back and do the closeout. We have to be able to do this closeout because we cannot leave any account in the negative. So instead of trying to go to fund balance with you guys, coming in and asking you for fund balance, what we tried to do is look at everybody's budget and where there was available money is to move and cover these things that had to happen. Some of the things he's talking about, I had a computer crash, some other people had computers to crash, that it was, they had to have it or their people can't work. So we did have to move money to get those computers. They would have brought that before you in that, in the fourth quarter, but because we told them they could not, we would not allow any budget moves because we have to close out the budget, that's why they did not come before you. It was things that we just, we had to do to get, to keep everybody working.
In understanding, and I do understand the procedural part in you doing your part, but it seems to me that it becomes a way to set a precedent to bypass legislative authority when it comes to those items that should come before us in an order. Even in this, and I understand it's the ninth hour, I would feel even at more ease if we were at least to highlight what those items are so that we would know.
Okay, and I get what you're saying, and I understand that because like I told you before, we don't move anything across category that doesn't come over here. That is the one thing we have started doing now is attaching that in the system. So whoever comes back, the auditor to look at it, because that's one of the things the auditor asks for when he's seeing moves across categories, he wants the agenda item and the votes, the statement of votes. So we have come back, we have started adding that into the system and getting the statement of votes on those before we make the moves so that Brandon and them can attach that. So that's why this is here, it will be attached in the system with the minutes, with the statement of votes showing that we had that authority to make these moves.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Okay, so looking at this first page here, it says, "The Department of Finance Administration requests the approval of an intra-departmental transfer of $106,208,385 from numerous categories." That's a lot of money. What is that, like 25% or 30% of our budget or more?
It's a lot.
One of the questions that jumps out to me from a layperson's viewpoint is, we still got $106 million left in the bank? Is that right?
Yes.
That's a lot of money. I just...
Some of these are coming from outside funds. Now, they're not all general fund.
So where's the money? So for transferring $106 million, where is it being transferred to?
Sometimes it's just to the line where they can actually make the payment because like a lot of the outside funding is put into a contingency fund until those projects are approved by you guys. Then we move it from the contingency line to the project line.
Okay.
And that is the 6,800, that's the capital improvement line. The contingency line is in a 6,700 category, which is a total different category. That's why they're having to cross that category with it. We are setting up something now so in the future, we can set it in a whole line that will not be outside of category. But when we were under four categories, the contingency line and the cap, it was all together. But now, since we've gone to where we have five different categories, now they change categories. So that is why it's in here like this, that's why you see so much of this. A lot of this is capital movement, to make capital payments.
Okay, so when you're taking, if it's in a contingency account with plans to spend it on capital investment or whatever, and you're moving it out of that, where is, where are you moving it to?
Once, once the project is approved by council, we then set up a project string that ties to that project, and it is moved to the capital project line so that the payments can be made. You cannot make payments out of a contingency line, it's just a whole line. So it has to be moved into a line that they, we can actually put a contract on and make payments out of to liquidate the contract.
Okay, I just, I'm still confused about if the money's in a contingency, it's going to be spent at some point in time for a particular project or whatever, why it needs to be moved at the end of the, at the end of the quarter, or the end of the year? Why would we have to move it somewhere else?
Fidel is Malinbecker, CFO. So Councilman Foot, in fact, with the document that you have, the attachment...
Okay, tell me what page you're to.
There's a breakdown, and these are not numbered. And essentially, the explanation is in the right column. If you go maybe midway through the pay, the document, just like one of them, on the right side is the explanation of the move, and then the column next to it is where the money is moving from, and then the column after that is where the money is moving to. And so, for instance, with grant funds, and the significant portion of it will be in grants. So for instance, Human and Cultural Services, when they received some funding, it was put in 6,800, right? And so they're moving that $3 million to the 6,700 where it's being paid from.
From the 6,700 to the 6,800.
Right. And so that should be able to help you follow in terms of what is, you know, most significant when you're talking about millions of dollars. When you look at Human and Cultural Services, in fact, I think if you, since they're not numbered, if you just go on the left side, the left column should have the actual department. So it's going to be mainly Public Works, Human and Cultural Services, and Planning because they receive the most significant grant funds. Yeah, and the other one, so what is most significant here is we've highlighted under Public Works, so these are the loan funds, the SRF loan funds, right, for $43 million, and also you have like $35 million. And so those were put in the, in the right category. So with that, I think that's...
They were taken out.
Right, that's about 70, what, $78 million? Yeah.
When we adopted, when we adopted the budget last year, it was not certain to how the SRF loans were going to go to the third party. It was back and forth, were we going to continue to make the payment?
Could you speak, I'm sorry, speak in...
It was back and forth, were we going to make the payments or was the SRF going to be turned over to them, and they would have control of it. The EPA had not made that decision at that time, that's why we had to budget it. But once the decision was made, that he is now responsible and he has control of those dollars because my thing was, if he's making change orders that are not coming before council, I would not have that documentation to give to the auditor. So that's why, you see, now we're taking it out of the budget for the final closeout because it was no longer our money.
So can you tell me, I'm really curious, this is helpful, can you tell me what page to look for, the, like the Jackson Water type money or the, oh, sure, yeah, if you, okay.
So with those monies that were SRF appropriate, I see, for example, you're taking, in a department for New State Street Signal, you know, the garbage engineering expense.
Okay.
Riverside Project, Riverside Project, et cetera, et cetera. I guess my concern with the moving of these monies...
I see.
...that could either be a cross-category move or the movement of monies that, you know, have all of these things come before us in some form of an order? That's my main concern. The things that are in here that should have came before us within the fiscal year in the form of an order, one, why did it not? And two, I want a clear legal way to rectify this other than just this way.
How do we, yeah, we need to figure out, Mr. Banks is raising some really good points, and we've got to figure out a way out of this. I mean, we've got, this is a...
It's SRF loan money that is being moved, and we're doing an amendment, and the orders, the fear is that those orders did not come before us within a fiscal year. The greater fear is that in doing this, any administration at some point could bypass the legislative authority and use the budget process or the amendment process to not bring things before this body for approval. And I'm not comfortable with doing that, especially with these state funds and all the other stuff that we have to deal with.
The one suggestion I can make is that when we do a project, if it's crossing categories, we can let the department know and they need to bring that at the same time that they're asking you for the project.
And that's for the future. What about, what about the things that are in this order that this body did not approve in the form of an order that's here? Go ahead.
Sanjay Monk, here, Office of the City Attorney. What we can do is go back and ratify those transfers. Finance will have to identify all the ones that didn't come before you all, who can ratify, and that could clean up the minutes.
I would rather do that.
I agree.
I know it takes a time, but we, I do not want to set a precedence of doing this. Why did this, how did this happen?
So when things come across you all to be approved, the money should be moved with everything that's going on. It has not when it comes to projects. So for example, if we have money in contingency for a project, when you approve a project, you should be, we should be approving that across the category move at the same time. That has not been happening.
All right. I got, can I have a follow-up question?
Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Mr. Malinbecker showed me on this page under Public Works where there's two lines, two items. One's a transfer of $43.57 million, and the next one's a transfer of, it says long-term debt, and it says transfer of $35.7 million, so a total of $79 million just in two line items. And it says transfer in from Water Sewer, so I guess this money is being, was there for the use of the Water Sewer system, and now that Jackson Water is handling that. These funds are being transferred to Jackson Water, is that correct? Where's it being transferred to?
So that transfer is specifically to take the funds out of the, out of the fund instead of adding anything to it. So for example, the SRF loans that they were just talking about, that is the proceeds to long-term debt. We are not receiving that anymore, so that has to come completely out of the budget.
So it comes out of the budget, but does, so this is, this is just a bookkeeping exercise, I assume?
Yes, sir. So we are actually, with the transfers you are talking about, that's actually taking the money from the revenue side and the expense side, pulling it directly out of the funds. So this is just for bookkeeping records, taking it out the books.
So this debt, does that become the debt of Jackson Water?
I believe they do have the SRFs, that's why we took it off our books because they currently have them now.
And then they're responsible for paying the debt service on... And then they're responsible for paying the debt service on, on that debt that's behind, that's backed up by the Water Sewer system?
Yes, sir, that is their responsibility, the SRFs are their responsibility now.
Okay. This is really a big deal. I mean, to, to come at the last minute and have to, you know, try to swallow all this.
So the question becomes, how long would it take?
Yeah.
For Finance to present us with all the items that should have come before us as an order and be ratified?
Instead, instead of separate documents, Legal, if you may advise, could all those ratifications be in one document? I guess it had to be per department. So if it's ratifications for Public Works, then you just say ratifying whatever decisions, and then, you know, list them, and then if it's planning or whatever, we put them all? Is that, is, are due to, or should there be a separate ratification for each action?
I don't know how many that, you know, there are.
You need to find out.
Yeah, if it's a lot, then we probably want to separate it by department. If it's just a few, I think one order would be sufficient.
Okay. If, if, Madam President, if we can table this until they get that to us in real short order.
What I would like to do is go ahead and table this one, take up the rest of the items. We do have to add, we do need to consider adding an agenda item, go ahead and finish with the rest of the business, and then I will recess until, say, one o'clock?
That's fine.
Has to be closed, number one, this, the budget has to be closed by the thirtieth.
I'm well aware, I'm saying one o'clock today, can you get it done by then?
We're talking about today?
There's a lot of research going with all of these transfers, so it would take me and my team, I'm not sure exactly how long it's going to take, but it's going to take more than a couple of hours.
You, you, you need to start working there. I mean, look, because at the end of the day, when it comes to these decisions, and put yourself in, in, in my position, the auditor's not going to come after, you'll check, they're coming after mine and everybody up here. We're the ones that are held responsible to that level, so I, you know.
All right, what time could, what time today could you have this done? Colleagues, what time?
If, if we recess, if we can add it to the, if we recess till tomorrow, we can add it as an emergency item.
Right, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
We don't even have to, Mr. Banks, if we recess and the meeting's selective, we can just add it, can't we?
Yep, we could just add it.
We can just add it, it doesn't have to be an emergency. So I think if you, what, what time tomorrow could you have it ready? I've got a very full schedule tomorrow.
This afternoon. Because we're going to work with Sandra, so we can try to knock this out.
I, I am, I will not be.
Maybe we can provide, provide you, I would update like around one, around lunch today, and just see.
One o'clock tomorrow would work.
Okay.
All right. That's what we'll do then. I don't, I haven't really looked at this, given all of this, hang on just a minute. We can go ahead and proceed with the rest of these items, though, right? Yeah. All right, so colleagues, who, let's see, who made the motion?
I withdraw.
Your motion.
My motion, or second, whichever one.
Mr., Mr. Grisell, can, would you withdraw your second?
I withdraw.
All right, so.
Madam President, we need to make sure that they understand what we're requesting.
They do.
Okay.
They understand. So, all right, so we are, I'm going to table this item for now, and then we are going to move on to item number four, and we'll get as far as we can. All right, item four.
Or accepting the budget of Jackson Municipal Airport Authority for FY 2024-2025.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second, accepting the budget of the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority. Any questions or comments?
Where is it?
It's the item four, Mr. Foot.
Find it first.
Right, right here. Item four, we tabled.
No, no, I'm saying the airport budget is.
Oh, well, we've already, it's already been presented to it, this is just a formality. This is just part of what we do. We've already gotten it.
We had gotten it?
Yes, and we also approved the millage at the, at the public hearing.
Okay. All right.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, item number five.
Resolution approving and adopting one-mill tax levy from the existing city of Jackson, Mississippi, citywide tax levy dedicated specifically for street resurfacing for FY 2024-2025.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second, this is to approve and adopt the one-mill levy for our street resurfacing projects. Any questions or comments on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Foot.
So this is, we had this last year, and my question is, how much of that actually got spent on street resurfacing of the one mill that was taxpayers paid?
It's the million dollars. Mr. Wright, do you know how much of it was actually spent? How much of the, of this mill was actually spent, Mr. Foot wants to know?
I'm sorry, how much of the mill was spent?
How much of the, of the one mill was actually spent?
On resurfacing.
On resurfacing streets?
Last year is we transferred that money to the fire rags, remember? Because we have the one percent. We did, we did that, and this year we transferred it to the grass cutting, because we have the one percent, and we have modernization.
Okay.
We have other places to actually pave the streets.
I don't think that the citizens are going to swallow that very well. They pay, the, the one cent gets paid, and we're spending that on roads, good, but then to say, we're going to bill you another mill here for a million dollars, but then we're not going to spend it because we got other priorities, that's not fair to the citizens.
We're not adding a mill to our millage, we take one of the general fund mills and do that with it, that would normally be to the general fund. It was an ordinance that y'all passed to take one mill and, and do that. We're still, we're still at sixty-three point three mills.
I, I can't support this, voting for this, I might get overridden by the other, by the council members, but that's really not fair to sit, put up here and say, we're going to take this and it's going to be dedicated to road resurfacing, and then it doesn't get done. It gets spent on something else.
Mr. Banks?
Out of the millage that we approved, it's like sixty-three something, sixty-two, sixty-three, what is it?
Sixty-three point three.
One mill of that is being allocated, you know, to do some of the stuff that we need to, so basically that millage rate breaks down within general fund and other funds.
Yeah, I, I think I understand that, but my point is, the, it's disingenuous for us to sit here and vote in favor of a mill specifically for street resurfacing, and then not spend it specifically for street resurfacing. Anyway, maybe we can do better next year.
Yeah, my understanding is with some of the moves that we made to keep it from going across categories, like for example, we used modernization tags to do certain things, you know, we use certain monies in certain pots to be able to achieve some of the goals that we had. And so this is basically just a way to rectify that. So there still will be plenty of money in the pot for street resurfacing.
We got to make sure and spend it.
Well, so, all right, so.
I agree.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't.
No, I was just saying, I agree. It has to be spent.
All right, so when did we start collecting this one mill? How old is this particular pot of money? It goes back many, many, many decades.
Yeah, it was back in the day when we didn't really have.
When we didn't have the one percent sales tax.
We didn't have the one percent sales tax, we didn't have the modernization, we didn't have these other revenue streams to do resurfacing. And it was, it was really divided, if you remember, it was divided, this may be even prior to you, Ms. Lindsay, it was divided amongst the council people. Every ward got so much money, but one mill and what it cost to resurface today, the one mill for a long time now has probably been used more for potholes than anything, because one million, one point two, one point, this year it's one point two is what that mill, each mill is worth.
It won't repave the streets.
It won't even, it won't pave a street.
Well, and that is how I got comfortable with it, because we do have the one percent sales tax commission now, and we do have the modernization tax now, and we did, we did not have those two pots of money when this was created, and we desperately need, and our citizens are pleading with us to mow the grass on the rightways and the medians and in the cemeteries. And so that is how I got comfortable with it, because this one point two million means a whole lot to our citizens if it can be used to cut grass. It does not amount to much of anything when it comes to repaving a street. So, Mr. Foot, that is how I got comfortable with it.
And Mr. Foot, the one percent and the modernization is very specific to what it can be used for.
I don't.
So we could not move that money around in certain areas. This being really a general fund mill you have, it's unrestricted, you could make the ruling.
Okay, then we, I'd like to make an amendment to this.
Okay.
That, I move that we change the language to the city realizes a financial need to allocate a continuing one-mill tax for whatever that the city needs, city council determines needs funding at the end of the fiscal year, and take out the street resurfacing out of this.
I don't think we can legal, can we do that legal?
I think you'd have to change your ordinance.
We'd have to change the ordinance, Mr. Foot. But I think we could work on that, and it could be for public works projects or something like that. I think that is, but we can't do that today as an amendment.
And I think that's a great idea, actually.
It is a great, great idea. I think we should do that. All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Grisell?
I'm in favor.
All right, it carries with a vote of three to one. All right, Mr. Banks, we have on here discussion budgetary matters, was there any, or, or Mr. Malinbecker, Ms. Thames, is there anything else that we need to bring up with that one? I do want to get this one on the floor, so let's don't forget about that. Anything else?
The only thing I would like to say is we've had some, I've gotten some calls and so has Brent, about some invoices that have not been paid, and we're trying to get all those. Our goal, honestly, is by the last docket in October to have every back bill paid. So I would like for you to be aware of that, and we will be bringing this information to you. As a matter of fact, we're compiling a list of everything that hasn't been paid that we know of, and where we need to get those funds from. Our main concern right now is things that are coming in that are past due from Water Sewer, is not having a place to pay that and not try to come out of the general fund with it. We want to give you those ideas, but we want to get, we want to get those totals together. We're working on that right now to get that to you, and we want to, we will be bringing that to you. We just want to start October out, because the last docket in October is the last time we can pay past due invoices, or invoices prior to the new fiscal year, and it is our goal to get all of those cleared up, so that we can, also, that helps me to get the capers out, it helps me to tell you what the real fund balance is, because like I said, we've already paid, and we have a presentation I'd love to present to y'all of what we've done so far. We've paid out close to ten million dollars in back invoices. We have really been working. I know it, it doesn't always seem like that, but we have really worked hard to get these back, and we've, you know, tried to get in touch with these vendors, we have sent emails out, we have sent surveys out, everything to try to communicate to get those invoices into us. They are, a lot of them have come in, some of them are still, we've gotten just a few here lately, but we, we want to let you know what they are and what we need to get all those back bills paid.
Thank you, and we would certainly welcome calling, Mr. Banks, I think we should call Finance Committee meeting and have them do that presentation.
I, I will. I also request that for these debt services that we're talking about, to have the attached authority given or order for each one, regardless of how far back. We could just get with the clerk's office, do the research, so that we could see those orders along with, you know, the debt minus whatever is old, and also, you know, and I know at some point in time, some of the vendors or contractors were just submitting invoices, and some of it kind of got away. And I believe there lies your biggest problem, because you had contractors that were just submitting invoices, and they won't, whoever's, whomever's desk for how long. So I don't, I don't know how to track and clean it all up, but I think it starts by just making sure that we are aware. There should not be any debt that we owe as a city that we're not aware about, because then the unfair thing for us is, we're making a decision to move monies, and while we're moving monies out of certain funds to achieve different things, then it's like, oh, well, hold on, we might have to, you know, and I'm not saying it's your fault, and I'm just saying, we have to have all of the information to make sure we make a decision, because if we have to go back and make amendments to change some of the actions we took, for example, Councilman Foot, we might have to go back, if we had to go back and make an amendment to take away the monies we gave for code enforcement officers, because we have this debt. And so all those moves that we made from all over the place, I think this was history-setting with thirty-eight.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine amendments in one budget, you know, it, it, it would take a lot. So if we can get that information, and I'll give some time before I call that Finance Committee, but we need all of that information provided to the clerk as soon as possible.
Oh, absolutely. We're working with Legal also to get that done. We would like to do it in one big move, so that's why we're working on getting everything we know of, and trying to clear everything out by that last docket in October. We need to know that, too. In Finance, we need to know who owe, who we owe, too. So I understand exactly what you're saying, because we feel the exact same way. Come the new year, everything is going out, I just signed off on a policy today, all invoices will start, have to start coming through VSS, that's, we're going to get that out by postcards, by emails to all our vendors, that they will know that there's a deadline that they have. All new vendors will have to come through VSS and have to sign up for ACH. All existing vendors will have, I think, thirty days to comply, and then all their invoices must come through there, then we in Finance can see all those invoices, and we won't get back here again.
I got.
All right, thank you. Mr. Foot?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. It's come to my attention that there have been some significant adjustments made in the financing for Jackson Water, that has freed up funds for them, so they're not as tightly constrained by, and to meet their billings, and that they've got with, you know, digging up water lines all over the city and whatever, and contractors. And so I think we should be, my hope is, I think they'll be more conducive to providing our collections for sanitation that go in, that they receive, and they've been behind the eight ball on paying us those collections, which we need in order to make the payments to, for our garbage contract. So if the administration would reach out to Jackson Water and see if they're, that funds are available now, so we can collect those not long after they get them, so the sanitation part in the Water Sewer, that would be really helpful, and would help the cash flow for solid waste and through the sanitation. But that's my understanding.
That was the next question.
What's that?
That's the next question. Go ahead.
Anyway, that's, so we need to reach out and, and see if that in fact is the case, that they're more liquid now, and they can share those receipts that they receive for the bills that we have to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Foot.
So the, the question is, where are we going to be with closeout without collecting those sanitation fees? Have we collected?
No, we have not.
So how, how, how are we going to be effective with closeout without that?
We will have to put that in as an AR, but we, we need our money back for our cash flows. So we, we're working on that. Not only do they owe us for sanitation, they also owe us for all of the supplies. Not only do they owe us for sanitation, they also owe us for all of the supplies that they've taken out of central supply. Because we pay for those materials in the past, they need to pay us back for those now, because they did come and get them. They also need to pay us the tax diversion for the SRFs, where that comes out of our taxes prior to us getting that.
So when you say you have to.
So, they, they owe us for water sewer debt, and they also owe us for sanitation.
When you say you have to AR, tell me what you mean, act like I went to California.
We'll put it as an accounts receivable, but we, you know, we can only do that this time. We have to get that money in. Next year, we cannot list it as an accounts receivable, we'll have to cover it.
So we can only do that once within a, is it, I mean, what's the governing rule? Is it once within a given year, is it once within?
Once we put that in there, next year, we cannot close out saying it's an AR, because they're gonna say, then why haven't you received it, you know? To put a receivable in, we have to have a good reason and have to show that that money is coming to us.
All right, so we're entering it as an AR, and then meanwhile, if we, and I'm just, want us to be prepared. In the meanwhile, is this coming out against fund balance? How, how, how would we deal with it if we don't get, if we're not made whole within this year?
It ended about $5 million.
It, it will come out next, next year, it will come out of your fund balance, because it would have to be covered. This year, it will not be coming out of your fund balance, because it'll be as an AR. But as you see, as we've talked about, when Scott comes in, he talks about writing off bad debt that's not collectible and writing the, the correct percentage of that off. That's where that comes in, is where he says, you know, it's, hasn't been past 90 days, past 120 days, then they start adding, to what portion of that can you really collect? And if you, if it doesn't seem collectible, then they, then it comes off of your fund balance.
Were you finished with, Mr. Banks?
Go, go, go ahead, go ahead.
I wanted to ask a couple others, just since we're doing discussion on budget stuff. Where are we, Mr. Malinbecca, on contracting with the CPA?
I spoke with Mr. Pierre today. He, we have, we will be giving them the scope of service this afternoon. Me and Mr. Malinbecca needed to look over that. Our plan is to have her onboard no later than, we really want her by the middle of October, so I'm gonna need y'all to get the contract approved for me, because we want her working by November 1st, because that's when we're asking Mr. Hodge to come in. She's also gonna be handling our single audit for us. So that will be one of the first things that we have to get out. And we're gonna have her working directly with their, with Mr. Hodge's CPA that he sends in to do that. So hopefully, we will have that contract in hand no later than next week, and we'll be bringing it to you guys.
Thank you, thank you very much. Colleagues, any other discussion items regarding where we are? One quick housekeeping thing, we've got to do the library. Mr. Banks, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just, have, have we received reimbursements for all the salaries paid?
Yes, Jackson Water has reimbursed us for the salaries that we have paid out, that those employees continue to work for him. And he's also paid on central supply, that he agreed to pay up to $500,000 to keep central supply open so that they could get those materials out of there. And those are the two things he has paid on.
So we're current everywhere else except for sanitation and some of the other central supply stuff?
And the reimbursement on our tax interceptor.
Okay. All right, and how much was that? How much is that?
So I, I have a follow-up with, with Ted, because we didn't understand why he was not reimbursing us since he gets invoiced. And I think when he had some discussions with Department of Health, they told him there was a loan that was in forbearance. And so what the city was sending was not matching, right? Or reflecting that forbearance. I checked with our controller last week and also checking with Public Works, because Benita Wells actually does produce us invoices to send. It's, it's a difference of about $45,000. And what I think happened, a while ago, a year and a half ago, we sent a letter to Department of Health and asked them to restructure our loans. And so they provided more principal forgiveness and also allowed us to refinance some loans. So maybe the paperwork just came in and it reduced by $45,000. But we didn't get the communication from Jackson Water to notify us that that could have been the holdup, right? So we have that follow-up, I was just trying to get the clarification on, you just got the paperwork. So, and, and the amount that was being invoiced, the intercept, I think, was about 350,300 a month, right? And so that had been invoiced monthly. So when you back out, you know, whether it's a 45, it might be, you know, close to 398 a month.
So, and all, you're probably gonna be AR on about $7 million?
Roughly, I think what I looked at was, rough numbers, was about $7 million is what I was looking at.
About $7 million?
Right.
All right.
All right. All right, Kay, thank you. All right, we are gonna move on now, colleagues. We've got the order, you have this in your hands now. We need to add, we need to consider adding this order acknowledging receipt of the budget for the Hines, Jackson Hines Library System to the agenda today, so we can take action on that today. Best I can tell, it was inadvertently left off of the agenda today. But that does need to happen today, so I would entertain a motion to add this to the agenda.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second to add this item to the agenda, all in favor? Mr. Griselle? Oh my God, oh, there he is.
Griselle? Yeah, it's on the floor?
It's on, absolutely.
Okay. I was thinking two mills goes to the libraries. Isn't it normally two mills that goes to the library system? But this is, that would be like 2.4 million dollars or something like that? But this 3.4.
This, this is their whole budget.
Does this, does this include the money they get from the county? I guess that's the question I had. Hey, you getting back on? Aaron was asking you.
I'm sorry, say again?
He's muted.
Wait, we, did he, what did he say? We didn't hear him say aye to getting that on.
Griselle? It's doing, it's doing that thing again, I think.
All right, so can you just put him on speaker?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. I'm sorry, I'm just so frustrated with this. Brian, you're gonna have to start coming to the madness. I'm just done with this.
It's not, it's not, you're not coming through on the system anymore. All right, I'm gonna hang up then, and let's see what happens.
So, so a question, Mr. Malinbecca reminded me that we took about a million and a half from the Zurich Settlement to go to the library. My question is, the 3.484, does that include the county money they get? They get money from county, so that, this is just our portion of their budget. Now, when they, when you get it, if it's endowment money.
All right, we got you.
That's.
Let's wait a minute, Mr. Foot, let's.
Sorry, excuse me, thanks.
We really need to, we'll go to all of that in just a minute. Let's get it actually on the floor.
Oh.
And we'll do it, we haven't even got, we don't, do we have the vote to make this an emergency item yet?
We need his vote.
And we don't, and why can't he say it on Aaron's phone?
No, he's, he's up now.
Brian, how do you vote on adding the libraries to the agenda? Thank you, Jesus, that only took 10 minutes. Okay, so, all right, now would the clerk please get the item on the floor?
Order acknowledging receipt of FY 2024-2025 budget for the Jackson Hines Library System and authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $3,484,638 to said system.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item, it is now on the floor. Mr. Foot?
Okay, so, the money, I understand the 3.484 million is coming from the city of Jackson to the library system, some of that's millage, some of that's from the Zurich Settlement, that they had told us they wanna put into an endowment. I'm not sure if there's an endowment, the, how do they budget for it?
They have a, they have a fund at the community foundation, and that.
Is that right, it's gonna go into, with the community foundation?
Into that fund, yes.
Okay.
And that will come back before us as an order at some point.
Really, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any, any other questions about this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, Mr. Griselle. All right, so that has now, all right, so let's do a little, let's do a little housekeeping here. As, while we, while I had a moment, I looked at my calendar, tomorrow is Thursday. I have a 1:00 meeting. I, I can't do this at 1:00, can you do it at noon? Oh, that's right, the Stuput Lunch. Y'all, tomorrow's crazy. So, um. I won't be finished with my meeting at 1:30. How early can you do this tomorrow? Can you do it at 11? 11? Thank you. All right, so this meeting is recessed until 11:00 tomorrow, where we will come back and reconsider item number three, which is the order amending the fiscal year '23, '24 municipal budget, once we have all of the information we need from finance. With that, this meeting is in recess.